Trailer, actually. Good evenings. I would like this call to prepare. Uh, the March twenty fifth meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and please remain standing after the pledge. Let's lead into the United States. To the Republican, which stands by my question, I draw the invisible. This past week, uh, we lost two people who were very close to the city of Norwalk and unfortunately very young. Uh, Congress, Congresswoman Mia Love passed away from cancer on March twenty third. After being born in Brooklyn, Representative Love was raised here at the city of Norwalk and attended Norwalk Public Schools. She was a graduate of Norwalk High School. She started her political career in Saratoga, Saratoga Springs, Utah, where she made history as the first Haitian American to be elected to Congress and the first and only black woman elected to Congress as a Republican. Also, we lost Igor Romeo, who was a junior civil engineer in our Department of Public Works and operations who died earlier this month. His hard work, dedication, and positive spirit made a lasting impact on all who knew him, and he will be sorely missed by his coworkers, fellow city employees, and residents alike. If you'll please join me in a moment of silence. May they rest in peace. Thank you. If you'll please call the vote.
Start with the members at large, Mr. Burnett.
President.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Najoski-Aigner, present. Ms. Smith, here. Uh, District A, Ms. Ayers, present. District C.
Present.
District B, Mr. Wiggins.
Yeah.
And Ms. Young, here. District C, Ms. Edie, here. Ms. Winnessford, here. District D, Ms. Dunn. Mr. Sutton.
Present.
District E, Mr. Prair.
Here.
And Ms. Shanahan, here.
Fifteen present, we have a quorum. First item on the agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of March eleventh, two thousand twenty five, who have a motion. Ms. Shanahan, are there any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Ms. Smith.
Yes, just one note on page six, um, at the start of the consent calendar. Uh, it should be Mr. Lopez was reading the consent calendar, not Mr. Lohan. Joe's hand with my low hand.
Any, any further corrections? deletions, omissions. Seeing none, all favor of approval of the minutes as corrected. Opposed? Abstentions?
Mr. Man.
Ms. Najoski-Aigner, abstentions. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have public participation. Uh, if you've signed the paper, you, uh, can speak on an item that's on the agenda, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Um, we have, we have the, uh, sheet. And while we're doing that, if you could check to see if there's anybody online that wishes to speak as well.
If anybody at home would wish to make a public comment, please raise your hand so the mayor could see.
Chris Schinkel.
You have three minutes to speak, and I'll notify you at the thirty second remaining mark.
All right. Well, good evening. This is Mayor, uh, members of the common council. My name is Christian Ko. I'm lifelong resident of Norwalk. Um, I am heavily involved in both flag football and youth baseball in all. And I'm here to talk about the increased fees.
About what? I'm sorry.
The increased fees, I guess we're going from ten dollars a person to fifteen dollars a person. Um, I guess just, I'm mainly talking about youth baseball. Um, there are multiple fields there. Uh, we try and keep the, the costs very low so every, so we can, um, everyone can participate. The numbers have been going down over the years. I guess everyone knows we went from, I think, five leagues in all to one. We have a combined, uh, Little League and Cal Ripken League now. Um, two of the main fields that we use, Anastasia and Divine. Personally, our, our league has put over eighty thousand dollars into those fields over the last ten years, including fences, fencing, scoreboards, drainage, sprinkler systems. Um, we still pay, uh, water bill, about three thousand dollars to maintain both Anastasia and Divine. Um, so those costs, um, come out of our, our fees for the kids and our fundraising. Um, last year, the fee went from five to ten dollars. Um, this was not, was, was it not expected? Um, but we dealt with it. We've been working with Robert Stowers over here, um, who has been helping relegate those fees and work with us with those fees and also with, um, the crews to maintain those fields. The problem with the fields are they haven't been maintained over the years. There hasn't been funding for the fields. If you drive by them, the two best fields are the ones that Cal Ripken and now Little League maintain. So if we have these increased fees, we'd like actually to give the resources to Robert and the staff to actually maintain and improve these, these, uh, these fields. Again, we understand that prices is going up, up and up all across the board. Our uniforms, our balls, everything's going up, but we don't want to increase the fee where we may get on a table for kids to play. Uh, right now, we just went over a hundred dollars for T-ball, and I think that's probably the lowest cost of any sport around here. And we're still struggling. The people complaining about those fees that went to, I think, a hundred and five, a hundred and fifteen dollars. So what I ask is that, um, when you're thinking about the fees, everybody in this that plays in this league is a taxpayer. Their tax dollars go into what we expect to maintain these fields. And now if we're gonna have to pay another fee and increase fee on top of that,
Thirty seconds left.
We might have, we would have to pay up to ten thousand dollars a year just to have four hundred kids play on the fields. That's a lot of money for a nonprofit organization. And I think all the nonprofits across the board are gonna be in the same boat. So when thinking about increasing these fees, I think I would delay it another year and then maybe have a five-year plan, the phase in the five, or, or a five-year lock on that increase. Just so, we understand we need to get more money and we expect more from that money, but let's give us a plan accordingly. My colleagues and my board members will continue the conversation after me, but thank you for giving me your time, and I hope you just consider what I, what I, thank you, thank you.
I represent one.
Evening, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing us a few minutes to speak about, uh, I think it's item C one, which was the increased parts fees. Uh, my name is Tyler Fairburn. I'm, I'm here tonight with the, the youth baseball caucus to, uh, discuss this, this proposed, um, fee raise. So we, um, we, we understand that it, it's probably what is necessary to continue maintaining the fields and to be able to provide a, a great experience for all the, uh, youth players. But, um, I, I think what, what I wanted to share was, um, the importance of timing for this, uh, for us. So we, uh, we have already kind of completed our registration process. We start that in January. Uh, you know, a couple of people will trickle in, but at this point, uh, we've already kind of locked everybody in for the, for the baseball season. Uh, so even a, a modest five dollar increase spread out over the four hundred and thirty so kids we had last year and we're expecting to have this year ends up being a couple thousand dollars. Uh, you know, with the additional fifty dollar increase of the field fee on top of that, it's, I think it's around a three thousand dollar increase, which for a, a nonprofit like ours, uh, that tries to keep prices as low as we possibly can to encourage as many kids to play, um, is, is a significant hit. So, uh, I, you know, I think what, what I would ask and, you know, on, on behalf of the, you know, the organization would be, um, you know, to potentially lock in the rate for a couple of years, just so that we know what we're getting into. Um, if this is something that's gonna increase, we, we unfortunately have no choice but to pass that along to the, to the families who are part of the league. Uh, we just, we can't absorb even a, a few thousand dollar hit. The money's just not there. So if we know ahead of time what the fees are gonna be, rather than have them, I mean, it's just, uh, you know, really unfortunate timing. Uh, i- if it, if it happens around this time, every year it goes up. So if we know what it is, we can, uh, kind of build that into the, the fees that we charge for people to play, which again are as low as we can keep them, but, um, you know, if it happens around this time, we're in a lot of trouble. So, uh, thank you so much for, for consideration and, uh, you know, we appreciate, um, you know, the city being an important partner for this public good that the baseball provides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Vinnie Mangia Kupra.
You got it right.
Very nice. Thank you, Vinnie Mangia Kupra. Eight this row. So nice to be here with you guys. I remember more people in the crowd last time I was here. Um, well, great to be here with you. It's such a, a pleasure for myself to be the president of Norwalk Youth Baseball. Just a little background, Norwalk Youth Baseball is a historic partnership between Norwalk Little League and Norwalk Cal Ripken, where we've, uh, joined our boards together to provide a first-class youth baseball environment that's unified and brings about the best in our kids and funnels all the way up to our high school programs with Coach Buck and Coach Mitchell. Now, last year was our first year that we've operated under that premise, and this year is our first year that we're formalizing it. Now with that, uh, we have really three pillars, if you will. We have our pillar of the organizations, Norwalk Youth Baseball. We have our parents, and that third pillar is the city of Norwalk. Now, what we ask is that when we look at fees and incremental fees and third-party market reviews and, and what the, the market can handle, uh, you might as well just put parentheses, "Parents" next to all those organizations. Uh, Cal Ripken, uh, the Norwalk Soccer Association, all those partnerships and all those organizations are really just pass-throughs. They're not making any money. They're nonprofits, and ultimately, all the fees that we have to endure for things like this, we ultimately have to pass on down the line to them or to our business community to help support us. So with that, all we ask for is we're on board with phasing a plan in, but with that plan has to come some of the improvements so we can maintain first-class environments of all of our fields, right? Make Norwalk that destination for people to come, wanna play baseball, and carry on the rich tradition that we have here for the baseball community. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess.
Is anybody, uh, in, listening virtually that wants to make a comment?
At this time, there doesn't appear to be anybody online. If you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand.
No.
Right with that, we close the session. Next item on the agenda, resignations and appointments. We do not have any at this point. Next, we move on to the remarks of the mayors. So I'm proud to share that the city of Norwalk was named one of the top one hundred places to live in the state of Connecticut by Niche.com. They pointed out the city's nightlife, diversity, commute, health and fitness, outdoor activities, and family-friendly atmosphere is the best reasons to, to live here. This further reflects our efforts to improve the quality of life for our residents and make Norwalk a destination for families and people of all ages to live, work, and play. Uh, and a lot of that credit goes to the council, to the people that work for the city of Norwalk, that work very hard in keeping our, our communities clean and keeping our communities, uh, up. So I appreciate that as well. Also, the, uh, proud to report that the Cat Pasture State, Cat Pasture State Park, Escape Park, was named best playground and best space. I'm having a trouble. I'm proud of the report that the Cat Pasture Escape Park was named the best playground and place space in Fairfield County in the two thousand twenty-four Daily Voice Readers' Choice Awards. We renovated the park in two thousand twenty-three. Many of you were there for the grand opening and saw how beautiful it is. And since then, it's become a very popular spot for our resident skaters and visitors from around the area. It's a well-deserved award, recognizing the hard work of our city employees, again, particularly the Ripken Parks Department, which spearheaded the renovation and works every day to improve and expand uh, recreational opportunities for residents. Uh, last, uh, thank you to all who attended the mayor's ball last week, on March fourteenth. Uh, I believe a great time was had by all, uh, and we possibly could have, uh, raised more money than any of the previous mayor's balls, so so we really appreciate that. Uh, and it's going to benefit the, uh, two really worthy organizations, the Salvation Army and the Family and Children's Agencies, two nonprofits who make a significant difference right here in the city of Norwalk. So I want to thank everybody for their participation and look forward to being able to disperse the checks. And with that, I will turn it over to the council president for the consent calendar and anything else.
Thank you very much, Mayor. No, no additional comments tonight, and the consent calendar will be read by council member Najoski-Aigner.
Thank you very much, President. Uh, beginning with item seven A one, narrative on tax collections dated March two thousand twenty-five. Uh, seven eight-two, monthly tax collector's reports dated February twenty twenty-five. A three, claims committee report dated March two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, A six, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into a three-year purchase agreement with Soft Choice Corporation, Inc. for sequel and Windows Server maintenance. The annual amount shall not exceed nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and thirteen cents, with the total amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand dollars, five hundred, fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Account number noted. City IT Cyber Security. Uh, A seven, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to submit an application to the state of Connecticut for the funds provided under the state of Connecticut's Local Capital Improvement Fund for Local Capital Improvement Program, eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-one cents, two thousand twenty-five grant. A eight, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute the grant assignment certification as state fiscal year two thousand forty-six, assigning state of Connecticut thirteen B, thirty-eight BB, elderly and disabled demand-responsive municipal grant program, apportioned funds to operation of transportation services coordinating entity, Norwalk Transit District. City match three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Account number noted. A nine, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to C T L Corporation for the supply of three hundred Chromebooks for an amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Account number noted. Uh, seven B one, approve section one oh three fourteen, appointment of members, increase in membership, Board of Assessment Appeals. Seven C. Three, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to sign an agreement clarifying the long history of joint use of the city of Norwalk's publicly-held school buildings and facilities between Norwalk Public Schools and its P T O and P T A S and Norwalk's Department of Recreation and third-party users, and clarifying timing and situations determining priority use. The agreement has been passed by the school board and is awaiting signature by the school superintendent. C four. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into an agreement for the use of Cat Pasture Beach and immediate surrounding grounds by Third Taxiing District for their summer concert series to be held on Sunday, July twentieth and twenty-seventh, August tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, from five P M. to seven P M. Set-up time by three o'clock P M. Saturday with tear-down by eight P M., approximately five hundred people. C five, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into an agreement for the use of Veterans Park and immediate surrounding grounds by Triangle Community Center for their pride in the park, to be held on June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from two P M. to eight P M., with a rain date of Sunday, June fifteenth. Set-up time by twelve P M. Friday, June thirteenth, with tear-down by twelve P M. Monday, June sixteenth, approximately ten thousand people. C six, authorize mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all documents necessary to grant an electrical and gas utility easement to Eversource in the vicinity of William Street, Norwalk, Connecticut, for purposes of access and maintenance. P and Z eight twenty-four referral, referral of the proposed easement in the vicinity of William Street, Norwalk, Connecticut for purposes of access and maintenance, or review and report. C seven, authorize mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all documents necessary to grant a temporary electrical and gas utility easement to Eversource in the vicinity of Marvin Street, Norwalk, Connecticut, for purposes of access and maintenance. P and Z eight twenty-four referral, referral of the proposed easement in the vicinity of Marvin Street, Norwalk, Connecticut, for purposes of access and maintenance, or review and report. C eight, authorize mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all documents necessary to grant an electrical and gas utility easement to Eversource in the vicinity of Cat Pasture Beach Road, Norwalk, Connecticut, for purposes of access and maintenance. P and Z eight twenty-four referral, referral of the proposed easement in the vicinity of Cat Pasture Beach Road, Norwalk, Connecticut, for purposes of access and maintenance, or review and report. C nine, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a sole search, sole source purchase order in an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Planet Geo for the additional inventory of twenty-five thousand trees from grant accounts noted. D one, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary with Syntas Corporation for a period of five years in the amount of two thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars for year one, increased by three percent for each year thereafter. Account number noted. D two, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute agreements with C T State Community College, Norwalk, for health department staff and volunteers to use space on C T State Norwalk campus for the Know Your Numbers Health Screening Program on various dates between April first, two thousand and twenty-five, and March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. D three, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary with Carver Foundation, Inc., to provide financial assistance for the two thousand twenty-five Summer Enrichment Program in the amount of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Account number noted. E one, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into any and all project authorization letters and other documents required by ConDOT needed for expenditure of funds under the Connecticut Department of Transportation's Urban Action Grant program for Route Fifty-three Chestnut Hill Road Sidewalk Project. Account numbers noted. E two, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement between the city of Norwalk and V H B for one hundred percent design services, bid advertisement, and bid analysis for the roundabout at the intersection of South Main Street, Meadow Street, Wilson Avenue, and Meadow Street Extension in an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Account number noted. E three, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into any and all documents and agreements required by the Connecticut Department of Transportation, V T D O T, to accept funding related to the West Rocks Road Sidewalk Project under both state projects, uh, one hundred and two dash three sixty-five and one hundred and two dash three seventy-four. And the, who's the reading of the consent?
Thank you, Ms. Najoski-Aigner. Uh, you've heard the consent calendar, and I will call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously. Back to you.
Mr. Burnett, item seven A four, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, item seven A four, uh, tax assessor report and resolution, and the resolution reads as follows. Whereas this, the city of Normal, acting through its tax assessor, makes an assessment of property taxes on motor vehicles on October first of each year in accordance with section twelve dash forty of the Connecticut General Statutes. Whereas for assessment years commencing, commencing on or after October first, two thousand twenty-four, any municipality may, by vote of its legislative body, elect to apply the modified schedule of depreciation under section twelve dash sixty-three B seven B of the Connecticut General Statutes. Whereas the co- common council is the legislative body of the city of Norwalk. Be it resolved that the common council of the city of Norwalk hereby elects to apply the modified schedule of depreciation under section twelve dash sixty-three B seven B of the Connecticut Genu- General Statutes as amended and in effect on the date of this resolution commencing from October first, two thousand twenty-four, grand list. Like to move this item, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, speak to it along with, uh, our chief financial officer, Jared Smith.
Yeah, or Mr. Burnett?
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, as, as stated in this resolution, um, uh, the, uh, general statute allows local municipalities, um, to set the rate of which, uh, we go about, uh, motor vehicle assessment. Uh, originally, we had looked at eighty-five percent, but with this modified schedule, we're looking to approve ninety percent, which essentially will generate additional revenue for the city and ultimately, uh, allow us to reduce the mill rate by s- a, a few percentages. Uh, but, uh, any help is better than no help. So, uh, this is the, the essence of this particular resolution, and, um, our chief financial officer, uh, Jared Smith, can add additional commentary.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you and good evening, everybody. Uh, I feel like we have, we have actually been talking about this for months and the new methodology and the mill rate related to motor vehicles. And, um, as of about a month and a half ago, the legislature and the governor signed a bill that would allow municipalities to change that depreciation schedule. Um, to start at the, the new model year, uh, vehicles would start at eighty-five percent. Now, what this change would do, if you adopt it, they would start at ninety percent. And then each year thereafter, there would be a five percent reduction in the depreciation, in, uh, in the value of the vehicle. This was, uh, a- as you know, uh, everybody's struggling, we're all struggling with the, uh, with the revaluation and the increase on residential real estate. Um, the, the result of the methodology change and the mill rate change by the legislature a, a while back uh, on motor vehicles, uh, would result in a large reduction, relatively large reduction in motor vehicle tax. It would be about a, roughly a thirty percent reduction in motor vehicle tax. Um, and so what this change would do is it would make that reduction not quite as big, but would help, would be a help in offsetting the, uh, what, what everybody's experiencing from the, uh, residential real estate tax and the, and the revaluation. Uh, the, the total value of this, uh, we project is gonna be somewhere around one point eight million dollars. Um, and which helps to offset the methodology portion of what the legislature had done uh, to motor vehicle tax. Um, but there, uh, as I said, there's still gonna be a, a relatively large increase, uh, decrease in, uh, motor vehicle taxation, um, and, and a corresponding decrease in, um, in, or increase in revenue to this, to the city. Uh, I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Any questions from members of the council? Ms. Najoski-Aigner?
Just very quickly, what happens, uh, at twenty years? Is it essentially you know, look, I pay property taxes on the cars now that they have a set depreciation schedule?
The lowest they're allowed to go, uh, is two hundred fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Burnett, item seven five, A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item seven A five, uh, special capital appropriation relating to school H VAC grant projects. And I believe we need to, uh, vote on each one of these separately because they're different amounts and different schools, but I'll start with item A, and then we can have discussion and then we'll continue on from there. So, uh, item seven A five A, approve the allocation of four million nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars in special capital appropriation funds for interim funding of the state's sixty percent share of the project costs in compliance with state H VAC grant requirements for Brian McMahon High School H VAC Improvement Project. Uh, I'd like to, uh, move this item and speak to it. Uh, we also have, thank you. Uh, we also have, um, Alan Lowe with us from Building Management to also speak to the item. Uh, this, this is not a new item coming before the, uh, council. We had previously approved, um, uh, the H VAC project for the, the related schools that are listed on the agenda, um, and the funding. Um but due to the process that we have to go over, we have to allocate and ensure that both the city portion as well as the state portion, uh those fundings are secure. And as you know, um we're getting uh reimbursement on this cost, but we have to ensure that the complete funding is available. Uh so that uh this is coming back before the council for the special, as a special capital appropriation to cover the state's share. Again, this will is the reimbursement share of these projects and uh Alan Lowe can provide additional commentary uh on this process.
Mister Lowe?
Uh good evening, Mayor, Common Council. I believe Jerry is going to talk about the financial aspect of this request. And I'm here to, in case the council has a question about the implementation question, then I will respond to those questions. But Jerry, if you don't mind, you you can you review the uh the budget sigh of this request?
Yep, a- and uh thank you again, and um just to remind everybody, as uh Mister Burnett per- pointed out back in December of two thousand twenty three, you all voted for uh the authorization of of spending and the author- authorization to bond money so to cover the uh the city's portion of this pro- of these projects. Um what uh wasn't, that was done at the time because that gave us an opportunity to get the grants. We had to be able to show that there is local commitment to the project, and so um that's why that was done at the time. Uh what what wasn't, what didn't happen at the time was the authorization of uh spending for the the state share. So even whether it's coming from taxpayers or whether the money's coming from the state, there needs to be an authorization for us uh in the finance department for the administration to spend the money. So right now, we have authorization to spend the forty percent um city share uh but haven't done the state share. So this is really in that sense, this this partic- these particular items, they're not creating any kind of additional burden on taxpayers. It's not doing anything to our borrowing, to our bonding, uh nothing like that. This is really, in that sense, it's really a formality that we uh and that you all approve of us spending the money to cover the state portion of it, which we are going to receive in a grant. And that applies to each one of these uh subitems under here.
Any questions or discussion? Mister?
Can, what's the the meaning of interim funding? Is that we will owe that for, that is the forty percent that we owe, or is it just, why interim?
We we will uh we will owe that. I think that was um I think that was addressing really the the original uh the original funding that was approved um that was done to get the project started. Um but this is what what we're requesting is an authorization to spend the money. It's not, it's not interim in that sense. Um so, you know, the and if if you like, I would be uh, you know, if you if you'd like to uh amend it to eliminate that word, that would be, that would be okay, and it might help clarify it, but you know, I'm hoping that my um description will would be enough to do that.
No, I just, I just needed clarification. I didn't understand it, but thank you. I think now we're on the record with it, so if people were to watch, they maybe would understand. So that's great. Thank you.
Further questions or discussion? I'm suggesting that because all the others are just different schools as we pass through them, if anybody has any questions, you can certainly ask them now unless you have a question with one of the particular schools. Okay, seeing none, all in favor of item seven five A? Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. Seven five B, Mister Burnett, would you read that, please?
Yes, sir. Um seven, seven A five B, approve the allocation of one million nine hundred and ninety six thousand three hundred and fifty two dollars in special capital appropriation funds for interim funding of the state's sixty percent share of the project costs in compliance with state H vac grant requirements for Brookside Elementary School H vac Improvement Project.
Unless there are any questions or comments about that item, I will call the vote. All in favor of item seven A five B? Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. Mister Burnett, item seven eight five C?
Yes, approve the allocation of two million four hundred and seventy five thousand one hundred and twenty seven dollars in special capital appropriation funds for interim funding of the state's sixty percent share of the project costs in compliance with state H vac grant requirements for Marvin Elementary School H vac Improvement Project.
If there are any questions on this item, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries. Mister Burnett, item seven A five uh D?
Yes, approve the allocation of one million eight hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars in special capital appropriation funds for interim funding of the state's sixty percent share of the project costs in compliance with state H vac grant requirements for Silver Mine Elementary School H vac Improvement Project.
Unless there are any questions or comments, I will call the vote. Vote, all in favor? Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries, thank you. And now item seven eight five E, Mister Burnett?
Yes, thank you, sir. Approve the allocation of six million three hundred and ninety five thousand one hundred and seventy one dollars in special capital appropriation funds for interim funding of the state's sixty percent share of the project costs in compliance with state H vac grant requirements for Row Eighten Elementary School H vac Improvement Project.
There any comments or questions? All in favor? Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries. Now, item seven eight five F, Mister Burnett?
Yes, approve the allocation of three million eight hundred and seventy seven thousand one hundred and twenty six dollars in special capital appropriation funds for interim funding of the state's sixty percent share of the project costs in compliance with state H vac grant requirements for Naramec Elementary School H vac Improvement Project.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries. I just want to make a quick comment on this. You know, the public has been asking for this for a very, very long time. As you know, some of our schools are doing summer schools, classes, and so forth, and even at the end of June and May, it gets eighty, ninety degrees, and the children cannot, they had to close some of the schools. And this is something the people in Norwalk have been asking for a long time. So here we are fixing or adding air conditioning to six schools in the City of Norwalk. I want to thank the State of Connecticut and particularly Senator Bob Duff for assistance in working together, and the council certainly uh getting this grant approved and making sure that we're going to uh provide a healthy, quality air environment for our children in the school. So thank you very much. Next item is seven B. Two, I believe, Miss Shanahan.
Yes. Um, thank you, Mayor. I would like to move this item and make a few comments if I might. This is um approved vape ordinance, vape shop ordinance. Um the proliferation of vape shops across Norwalk has been a troublesome issue for our residents and especially for our youth. The legalization of cannabis sowed some confusion about what products can be sold and which types of stores that some vendors have exploited. Chief Walsh saw this matter as a growing enforcement issue that had to be addressed in a systematic and comprehensive way for the safety of our residents. At the chief's request, we convened a group that included the mayor's office, planning and zoning, and the then director of economic development to strategize as to how to best address the chief's concerns. The ordinance in front of us is the culmination of six months' work. In a minute, I will turn the description of the challenges that Norwalk faces regarding the proliferation of vape shops to the chief. After the chief speaks, councilperson Lopez will provide a summary of the ordinance requirements. Not before our body tonight, but in conjunction with our work, uh we have done it, that we've done in ordinance regarding vape shops, planning and zoning has also tightened their regulations to redefine vape shops as any retail establishment that sells these products regardless of how much floor space is devoted to the product and to restrict vape to shops to Zone One, which is basically Route One and Main Avenue in um Norwalk. And one last piece of business, after the chief and councilperson Lopez makes their presentations, I'll be proposing a small amendment to the ordinance to provide for uh more time for the city to create the licensing application and for applicants to make their application. Um on the final reading of the ordinance, we felt as though that was just a little bit tight, so we'll we'll take care of that. So having said that, I'd like to turn to Chief Walsh, who's with us, to um speak about some of the challenges we've been having with vape shops in the city.
Chief Walsh?
Uh yes, uh thank you, Mayor Rilling. Uh thank you, uh Common Council, for this opportunity to speak on this very important topic. Uh since the legalization of adult-use cannabis in the State of Connecticut in two thousand twenty one, um we've seen a significant rise in smoke shops and vape shops. Uh soon afterward, uh when they began to uh take ground in Norwalk, we started to see a uh a large criminal element moving into them where they were actually selling uh unregulated, unlicensed marijuana right over the counter. Um they were selling illegal uh vape products, illegal THC products. And right now, the State of Connecticut uh lacks the regulatory legislation. So when we do take enforcement, um there is not much we can do besides arrest the perpetrators, and they go to criminal court. But there is no real action to stem further activity, the uh profit involved in all of this. Uh to date, since two thousand twenty one, we've done over thirty uh investigations, uh leading to forty-three separate arrests. Uh sometimes, uh for one instance, we've arrested the same people seven times at one smoke shop. Um we have also had three situations where smoke shops have been burglarized during the overnight hours by criminal, by criminals targeting the marijuana that they're selling inside. So this is a significant issue in the city, and that's why I brought it to the ordinance committee, and the discussions uh began. We believe that uh this would be a significant improvement, and it'll be uh, it'll help us hopefully stem in control some of the criminal activity that we are seeing in Norwalk because to Councilwoman Shanahan's uh to echo her statements, uh it is a public safety issue because they are selling unregulated, unchecked uh marijuana and cannabis products over the counter, and people are assuming that what they're buying is legal and it's been checked at like uh the regular cannabis stores that we have. Right now, we have three of them. That cannabis is actually goes through a process. It's inspected, and it's it's uh dis-stuffed. We have no idea where it comes from right now. That's being so that the smoke shops is uh off the black market. And plus, there's uh other products that are being sold disguised as candy, which could end up in a uh, you know, a teenager's hands, believing that it is safe to consume, and it is not. So I do believe this ordinance will definitely assist the police department and the City of Norwalk. Once we get uh rolling on this and getting the registrations, uh and once we move forward, uh I do believe it'll take time, but we'll definitely see some of this activity slow down.
Mister Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. So let me just quickly go over
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you. Let me quickly go over some of the major components of the ordinance. The first one, of course, is to help the police department in its effort to deter some of the uh sale of unregulated cannabis, which can contain high levels of THC, and other substances such as fentanyl, and other illicit substances as well. Deter any sort of criminal activity that's associated with these sort of operations, but also try to decentivize these establishments from existing in the city in the first place. Now, when it comes to licensing requirements, that will allow the Director of Health, the Chief of Police, to conduct routine inspections of these establishments to ensure that they're actually compliant with with the ordinance. This allows them greater opportunity to actually review carefully inventory records, et cetera. So let's say when it comes to violations, first violation is two hundred fifty dollars. The second violation, if it occurs within a twelve-month period, is six months' suspension of the license. Third violation, if it occurs within twenty-four months, is automatically licensed revocation. Now, in both scenarios and suspensions and in revocations, um the the uh the retailer has seven days to completely remove all products from the premises, and failure to do so um really results in a fraction for every separate violation uh for noncompliance. And so last thing with the appeals, I mean, they do have the opportunity to request a hearing in front of the Board of Health and subsequently actually appeal state superior court. And so lastly, uh on a personal note, I know several months ago when we were discussing this, uh when we were discussing this uh ordinance, uh one of my younger cousins uh purchased uh unregulated cannabis that was laced with fentanyl and other illicit drugs, and he killed him in his sleep. He had a heart attack. Three, four days after his birthday, three, four months after becoming an uncle for the very first time. And so to us, it's really important. This this is something that's really important to my family and I. But also, this ordinance is exactly what it's intended to do, to avoid or prevent, mitigate these sort of fatalities from actually occurring, and also deter some of the criminal activity that's associated with them. And so um, yeah, so with that said, I'll turn over back to Lisa, Councilmember Shanahan.
So if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer questions about it. Otherwise, I can move to describe the man.
I don't have any questions, but I I just want to take a moment to thank the ordinance committee for all of your work on this because it's been so needed. And and Johan, I'm just, you know, you you have shared this with me in the past, but I just want to, you know, express how deeply, deeply sorry I am that your family has experienced this. And the reality is, those of us with kids, right? And and you know, anyone who knows kids, we know how really, really, really dangerous this is. So um the the public has been clamoring for this, um and it does take time. It's important to recognize it takes time to go through the committee, to work with the chief, you know, to get it right, but um I just really want to commend all of you on the ordinance committee for your work.
Further comments, uh Mister Goldstein?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I I just want to add um to uh Council President Smith, my thanks uh to my co-members on the ordinance committees with special thanks to Councilmember Shanahan and Councilmember Lopez, um not only on your efforts, but also your, you know, your personal connections to this issue really um drove home and and then really helped um put forward an ordinance, and I think it's going to actually really do some good um in Norwalk on an issue that is incredibly pressing. Um I think it's important to note, and I think the chief sort of underscored this very early on, that with the um legality of retail cannabis, um that there that there is a difference between cannabis that is legal and cannabis that is not. And so the fact of the matter is that vape shops that have taken it, have tried to undercut the market by selling illicit materials um and drugs. Um and I I commend the police department for going after them and for holding them to account. And this licensing program, which is a regulatory scheme that's actually been similarly used for other reasons um and other kinds of um businesses in the City of Norwalk um is an effective tool in the toolbox to try and make sure that these shops are in compliance and as safe as possible for our um our students and our residents. Um it's a vitally important issue. Obviously, everyone has seen of the proliferation of these shops. It's not to demonize any particular business. It is purely about um ensuring and creating public safety for our community at large. Um and and I and I just, I I just feel very strongly that we should be using all of the tools in our toolbox. Um and this is an important one. So again, I thank you both um dearly, Chief Walsh. Thank you for bringing this uh to us and being such a um important partner and community partner, not only um uh in terms of helping create these ordinance, but also leading the department to um keep our, keep our community safe and and really um go after people who are trying to take advantage of um our our young people, as well as, you know, people who think that they're buying one product, and it turns out they're not. And um and I know that there are many um officers in the Norwalk Police Department who have dedicated hours and hours and hours of time um to investigating and ultimately conducting raids, um even I think one as recently as a couple of weeks ago um that yielded um quite a hall. Um so thank you, Chief Walsh. And I just um, obviously, I will be voting in support of this ordinance.
Mister Najalski Iker?
Um just to very briefly add a point um in addition to my colleagues, I think well deserved thanks for everyone. One of the people who contacted me in support of this ordinance was actually a small business owner who owns a shop, who is very dedicated to complying with the law and would very much like to see others held to the same system. So again, I think this is an ordinance that is well designed to try to support our small businesses who are doing what they're supposed to do and really track down on those who are taking advantage. So I'm very grateful to everyone's work for this. I think it really came out to be a very solid ordinance, well-designed and thoughtful, and I want to also send my appreciation to the staff who will be managing this process. It will, I certainly be, I think, an effort in the initial, but I think it will pay off in the long run. I appreciate that work.
Mister Burnett?
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Um uh uh through you by to to the chief, um uh my question is is around uh with this ordinance, do you envision any additional police hours in terms of enforcement that as we go through the budget? That as we go through the budgets process, that uh, that we might. Need to allocate additional funding for uh, police overtime, et cetera, in order to ensure that. Um, uh, we can enforce this ordinance in, in its most proper way. Uh, can it, or can it be done within the current structure?
It can't be completed within the, our current operating budget, uh, like the past two years, the past three years, we've done thirty operations. And we've always stayed within our uh, overtime budget and uh, operating salary accounts. So I do not foresee any financial issues in uh, implementing and enforcing this ordinance.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, God, I hate being in this position, but I guess I am the opposer. Not opposing the ordinance, nor am I opposing the work of the members of the ordinance committee. I am. Happy that a ordinance has been proposed. And trying to regulate something that has affected many of our citizens in a negative way. But if we put on our other hat, our legislative hat, I, I have to bring this up in public since I have not. Necessarily been heard in private. Anytime we as a legislative body of the city of Nowak are going to pass any policy. Or any legislation that has financial implication. Chief Walsh, Walsh said that it does not impact his department because it's part of their normal duties of patrolling. But if you read the ordinance, there are other departments that are partnering with the police to get all of this work done. For that reason, because we are strapped as a city and we're doing the best that we can. I'm not gonna vote against the ordinance, but I am going to abstain from this um, vote. Because I think we need to build in processes that anytime we are giving a policy, a regulation. Or an ordinance that has financial implication, we should be working that differently. We cannot ask departments to scrub, to do less with more, but then give them more work to do. That's unfair, improper. And so, again, I am not against the ordinance. I support the ordinance, I am against the process of us making rules and regulation. With financial implication without giving additional resources to any department. If this was a parts of rec, if this was EPW, any department. If we're gonna make a regulation that's asking them to do more, well, we just sat in these seats two weeks ago and told them to cut more. Ethically, that, that bothers me, so I will be abstaining from this, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further comments or discussion? Ms. Smith.
I just wanted to make a note that the Planning and Zoning Commission is working on this issue as well in terms of uh, distances as, you know. Darius, what is it about, is it a mile?
Yes, it's a mile.
It's a mile. No, no, you, no, you, no, you're good, yeah, sorry.
So we are also uh, ensuring that, that they are not so close together and one for every mile. And uh, having another way of other friend with that, that will go hand in hand with this ordinance, so. Uh, I applaud the work, because it takes a whole government effort and I'm glad to all of you.
That'll take you to come. Any further comment or discussion?
All right, so may I, should I make the motion to amend that?
Yes.
So the small amendment that I'd like to make, um, has been approved by the Corporation Council Office, has not been significant change, so we don't have to have a second public hearing. So I just want to say that at the um, outset. And we are looking at section six, and what we basically want to do is just add the words to follow the word city clerk in the first line. We're gonna add the words not less than sixty days after the effective date. Of this chapter for an existing establishment or for the opening of a new establishment, so we're just adding those words.
So you, you're gonna amend it?
Yes, that's how we're.
So we're gonna have to vote on the amendment?
Yes, I have two small amendments, I think I can do them together because they kind of work together. Um, so that's how the new sentence will read, and then the last little change we're making is the last sentence of the ordinance, which is under. Article four, the effect of date, and we're gonna say this chapter takes effect on August one, twenty twenty five. And the effect of these small amendments is to give the staff and also the applicants a little bit more time. To do their work in order to um, get the application form created and then have the applications um, filed. And so effectively, as of um, October first would be when this fully comes into effect and applications should be made by them. So that's the effect of that, so I guess what I'm asking is that we, at this point. That I'm making a motion that we make these um, two small amendments that I just um, suggested to the ordinance and then we can vote on them.
So Ms. Shanahan is putting forth uh, two amendments to the ordinance. Uh, are there any comments or questions about that? All in favor of the amendments? Opposed? Obcessions? I saw that, uh. Okay, uh, Ms. Young.
I have another question, so if by that October day. Someone has not applied, then what happens to their?
They're in violation.
Their status, are they ordnamentably shut down?
Well, they're in violation of the ordinance and then at that time we can um, can move on them to say that you haven't applied, so you're in violation and you either need to apply or. Then you need to be shut down.
And I'd just like to say, I think that this should live in the Public Safety Committee, I think. You know, we're starting something new that's going to impact businesses because look, they, it's lucrative. Right, and so the potential is someone could lose that business, but I think this should be updated on. And the information should be um, should live in the Public Safety Committee. And I think we should be updated by the police on how this is actually working and, and the implementation of it.
Further comments or discussion?
I just want to add, I think, I think that's a great idea because we also have the Health Department and Emergency Management there. And, and it really is a health issue that we're seeing affecting especially our young kids and um. I think it'd be great to really start collecting data from those people, so. Second that.
Okay, any further comments, discussion? Questions? Okay, so the vote on the floors for the amendment as read by Ms. Shanahan.
So we voted at that, so now we're doing the.
Yes, we already voted on that, didn't we? My, so now. We need a motion to vote on the amendment, uh, vote on the ordinance as amended.
Yes.
So you're making that motion?
I am making that motion.
Any further comment or discussion? Okay, all in favor of voting, all in favor of the ordinance as amended? Opposed? Do we have any obsessions? So the motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work, it was, uh, I know it's very difficult, you find all the legal uh, entities as well.
I just have to say, just as, as a thank you to the chief, because he really came up with a great um, strategy, he used the strategy for um, the Sarge followers and it felt like a good um. Paradigm for us to use and it worked really pretty well, so thank you, chief. Appreciate all your work.
Okay, now it's uh, Ms. Young, item seven C one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. C one, approve the fee adjustments for the following fees based on a fees and charges study completed by MGT Consultants. Where they measured the market demand and cost factors in conducting recreation programs, activities and uses of the recreation and parks facilities. Um, as it says here, we did do, we did have a consultant come in and assess what the community could bear. Um, as far as fees were concerned, and so we thought that this was reasonable. And comparative to other communities, and so we would like to see this move forward, but I have to say that I do take into consideration the timing of this. And I think that was a very important point that we really need to consider, um, to lessen the burden on, on the um. What these gentlemen talked about on their programs, and so we have Mr. Robert Stowers here to just go into a little bit more detail about how we came to this.
Mr. Stowers.
Hey, thank you. As you all, remember, uh. In two, of all two thousand, uh, committee passed a master plan for uh, the city, uh, a part of master plan, parts of the space master plan. In that plan, there um, was a um, study of um. What our community bear in terms of. Of paying. Prove this to parks. To pay the requires. And generally, um, the, uh, public was against taxes, they're integrating taxes, uh. And they were also um, in favor of, uh, if they had been a, a strategy to be raising fees. And um, so they gave us uh, some examples of how much the fees could be raised. I've always been a person that wants to, to look at, look at. The scientific path of a way of, of raising fees, I don't believe, you know, this is kind of. Point your finger to win and, and, and prepare this going to pass the fees. So um, we hired a, a consulting firm, um, to, to assess the. The uh, economic liability demand of. City, and it's, it's traditional surveys to compare regions and cities that are local. But many times it just happens in which you really have to look at where you are and what the market demands. So we hired MGT, it was an accounting firm, financial pricing consultant. And they undertook a study of our fees and charges. And our method of providing fee returns. And that's all, and this study was to conduct a cost analysis. Establishing cost models to determine the cost to revenue. And also, uh, we looked at, um, the programs, what program in return for certain costs. Uh, the cost to revenue, so what, were, were the programs or activities um, returning? In, in terms of. Compared to the national trend in current district recreation park. Second part of our study was the price. Elasticity, and so basically that's the advance step. And to do that, they did several, I think nine, uh, nine or ten programs. With um, uh, with people within our, within our city, also they did a MELAP survey. And they did a follow-up survey. One survey has to turn in terms of consistency. Um, what, what they uh, arrived at was a um. A cost analysis that showed. Program return. Or a class program. Cost of revenue returned twenty-two percent. Uh, uh, twenty-two percent back to the city in terms of. Of the cost. Um, our facility rentals are turning about thirteen percent. And. While a normal thirty percent. In our indoor outdoor experience. Was returning about ten percent. And uh, some of the youth camps, of course, they're doing very, very well, they're returning seventy-six percent. And for the party, uh, well, over a hundred percent. Um, so they gave us some indication of where we need to pay attention to in one, whether uh, indoor or outdoor sports. So um, in, in establishing uh. A, a guideline to price increases. And they came up with a range of five to twenty percent, basically, before there, there'd be a demand of drop off. We decided not to go twenty percent, but to stick with between five and fifteen percent. Um, uh, fee increases, and that, that might seem. In terms of, uh, if you're looking at prices that are a little behind, but when you, you, you're looking at. Five or ten dollars fees or twenty-five dollars. It's not so, the, the difference in um, actual dollars in that rate. So we uh, established, uh, according to the charge. We are obligated to do a public hearing, right, to decrease the, of that facility. So we did do um, a, a public hearing. Uh, we, we did put out a notice to the public, we also have a um. We have a list of, of our participants, a large list of participants that we actually asked, uh, out, notice to the email. We related our, our veterans, our people, our people, our parking fees, our facility rental fees, our wall building fees. Our, our, our owners, our after key gardens. And uh, our guys, those, those, those who consider facilities, the, the grant by charter for this country, for public hearing. Uh, and so what you have in your packets is really the recommended fees we came up with. Um, from the study. Um, and so, and in terms of um. Timing. Uh, these aren't twenty, these are for fiscal year, uh, twenty, twenty-six fees. Um, so they wouldn't take that, any of that until um, the fiscal year. However, uh, I have met with, uh, the. I met with the baseball, uh, group team, and we tried to meet with our athletic groups. Every year and several times, and we stay in contact with them on, on the um. On the show of fields, we hear their, their, um, input on the fields, we, and we try, try to respond to them as soon as we can, so. Um, and, and, and just in uh. You know, and to be consistent with our meetings and consistent with what we talked about, uh, the end will take. Yeah, I would, I would think that. The twenty-two sixteen wouldn't take effect until, for them until twenty-twenty-six and, and uh. The season, so we can put off, uh, I think, raising those fees until the spring, their spring, um, season of twenty-twenty-six. That would give us some time, it would give us some time to raise money and to uh. You know, for us to look at a, a, a base project, and we've been trying to save. Um, one of the things that, um. One of the things that wasn't occurring, I can, was they were, um. A field use rental fees are not being connected. Um, and. For the public to use our, our, our fields or for a organization to play. Um, they're paying three fifty to three eighty-five. To use the field every time they use it. Um, what we decided that just there wasn't, uh, it would be too much of an impact. To impose that on, on, uh, on leagues and groups that have not here to afford the thing that kind of. We decided that we would, um, impose the, the same, um, field use fee. But only for the whole season, not for this one time, for the whole season, so. Uh, last year, we implemented a fee, um. Uh, in talking to groups, we implemented a three fifty. Per field for the whole season. So they paid one time fee for each field. So I'm using one more field, um, so I'm on a new plan field. So we gradually trying to, um. We gradually trying to bring them in and work with them to, um. To get our fees up. And it's something that you have. We, we, we expended about seven hundred eighty thousand. For our crews to take care of it. A year, and we're collecting less than seventy-two thousand. So, you know, when you start looking at that cost to revenue. It has to improve, but we have to work with them to improve that and we've got to improve our business. About that. It has to improve, but we have to work with them to improve that and we've got to improve our business about that. Um, so. I'm willing to. I'm willing to work with them to, to build the fees until next spring. Um, I think that that would be okay. I said, I'm, I'm willing to work with the teams to increase the fees till next spring. Because really, twenty twenty-six, this will be.
Michelle.
So does that then, we don't have to do any type, type of amendment to anything? Is it?
Are you looking to delay the implementation? You should put that in the motion.
So it sounds like, is it starting twenty twenty-six or? Field fees? So I think the, the change will be to the timing for those organizations that. Um, are under the field use field category. So we want to delay that, I'm sorry.
I have a quick question, just to, I, this is a matter of clarification in terms of timing, and I have no issues with this amendment or delaying. Fees for, for especially for youth sports leagues or sports leagues whose season is happening at or at or. Finishing just before the beginning of the fiscal year, because of course the fiscal year starts in July, so. Just to make it the policy clear, just from where you're coming from. Is it regarding specifically sports whose seasons run in and around the. This, the beginning of the fiscal year, or is it just all youth sports? Do we just want to make this cleaner?
Well, different sports have different seasons.
Right, which is why.
That's why I'm getting a public hearing and I talked to, I talked to the athletes. These and, you know, um, it seems that baseball, green baseball. The timing is more, it's more critical than the other stuff.
Okay, so then your suggestion is to delay the implementation of these, of this fee schedule. For the youth sports leagues until calendar year twenty twenty-six, okay?
Is that it?
Is that it? I'm not talking about fiscal year, I'm saying that's starting. In January first of twenty twenty-six, not July first of twenty twenty-five.
Is that right? Right.
That's right.
Right, right, so it would impact this baseball season, it would impact the next baseball season.
Michelle, if you want to amend your motion.
I, I think we have two more questions here, I think.
Is it, is it dealing, okay?
I, I don't know who's first.
It's not mine, it was a, a question on what council, on a woman's done is that if we're reading an act is that's in the agenda. There, there is no date in what we have here, so. Why are we, if, if that's a policy, that's a procedural thing, that he is just going to implement, why do we have to amend them? The, the, that's the question, why are we amending something that's not present?
You can vote on it, we just thought that putting it in, putting it into a certain date, this way it will be automatically implemented. Uh, rather than have somebody, all of a sudden we do it July first of this year as opposed to October first. I, I think if there's a.
There's no one.
Date in there, it makes it, so it makes it specific.
So we, you're essentially saying to add language to make sure. That it does not take an effect until July's twenty-second, or that specific piece of the, of the. For the youth leagues, gotcha.
Um, so I just similarly, I think, just similar clarification, so. All fees, all fee changes will take effect July first, twenty twenty-five, the start of the fiscal year. With the exception of the youth field use fees, which will begin January first of twenty twenty-six. That might be worth clarifying.
It honestly would be, yeah, an additional sentence, I think would be fine, even though I think Councilmember Eric is technically right.
Yeah, I just, there was another slide that was brought up for joy, that I want to ask a question about, which is, you know, like. Is, like, how long will these fees, how, how long can we expect these fees to be, uh? I- in effect and, you know, is there a five, five-year outlook so that they can prepare? You know, do you expect an annual, um, increase?
Well, normally annually there's no increase at least by my share.
Okay.
So I think there will be an annual increase. Increase, however, um, these guys are in, like this one.
Okay, so, so this is like, okay, this is a reset, and then after, after twenty twenty-six. You, you can expect an annual small incremental, okay?
Mr. Sead.
Uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not against, um, this in totality, and I do appreciate working with the, the youth leagues. Um, I think that is important to, to remember, like, when we see, like, what the market could bear. That these are taxpayers that are going to be paying these fees down the road, um. I don't know how much the taxpayers in Iowa could bear, more, meaning they're paying more in taxes. More in the grocery bill and their paycheck isn't going up. So I think that we just have to keep that in mind, that even though it's the organizations that's going to prove that that cost is going to go down to the family. And I think that that's important to, to just keep in mind, that I understand we have to raise money, but also. Taxpayers need a return on what they're paying to the city as well. And if we're looking like we're getting twenty percent back, like, we need to make sure that the taxpayers are getting something back in these leagues or something that. Help contribute to that and help people feel like they're part of Noah, and they are Noah. Um, so I think we just have to keep that in mind of where we recoup our money from. Um, because some of the facts of the taxpayers and the taxpayers are getting hit from every angle. And I just don't know how much more they can bear. Um, so I do appreciate the study and I know that they looked at it, but we also have a tax share that's coming, uh, where they're going to be hit there too, so. Again, hit from the city in every angle, directly and indirectly, and I think that that's just something that we should really be thinking about. Every time we talk about raising fees or anything, because it's going to come back on the taxpayers. Um, who are struggling, we're struggling at the city in this budget season, but ultimately that's because our residents are struggling. And we just should keep that in mind.
Absolutely, any further comment or discussion? Mister Juske, oh, Mister Juske, okay, you should.
So, uh, Mr. Sowers, I just also want to say, um. Thank you, because before we had you, as you were seeing, we were very behind, we were very delayed. And so I do agree with the sentiments of my colleague, but I do want to publicly, publicly say thank you for the work. To bring to our attention what we need to fix, as, um, someone said in public participation. That if we're going to increase those fees, we have to make sure that those fields show that increase in fees. And when you just expressed very eloquently that the money that we pay to uptake, upkeep this. Upkeep the field is not even covered by the fees. I think this body needed to hear that because we were not really giving that information in a tangible manner. But while my colleague did bring up a very important part about being mindful of those people that have to take, um. On those additional fees, I'm going to keep plugging, it's time for us to have a Parks Foundation. Because a Parks Foundation could help us raise money from people who are not taxpayers. So I know you have a little, a lot on your plate, and Thanksgiving is far away, and we don't like to overeat. But I'm going to actually slide some stuff over and try to get us this Park Foundation that we often talk about. And we have not yet been able to just get it up and running.
Mister Juske, absolutely right.
Um, so I have three unrelated comments, one is a thank you to our baseball folks. I, to this point, Mr. Mayor, I heard you say loud and clear, you have contributed an enormous amount to the city for the upkeeps of the field. You have actually done it independently, you know, working in conjunction with Parks Rec to actually invest in these fields. We thank you for your work on behalf of the city for doing that. Um, second, Mr. Mayor, I think this leads into this question of one of the things that we really would like to see invested more in the budget is a grant writer. Because I think this is the kind of opportunity that a grant writer would help us explore. Um, and the third point is that, uh, in relation to the summer camp programs, you mentioned those fees. It is my understanding that those are sliding scale fees, correct, so that if families who cannot afford the full fee still are able to attend our summer camps, correct? Okay, because I think that's important public information to have, the summer camps in particular, where it is so crucial for parents who work. Um, there is a sliding scale program there, so I want to make sure that's advertised widely.
Yes, and, and, and it's my whole foundation and, and other needs. Do a scholarship fund, um, so that. You know, science and, and scholarship fund. You can actually have kids that are afforded to be involved.
Any further question, Miss Eadie?
I don't really have any questions, but comment, I'm just wanted to thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Stowers, for being open and, um. Considering the concerns of the residents and our league players, and I do appreciate you for that. And I appreciate, um, the residents for coming out tonight and speaking about this.
We can't do it, we have, we have to go on with the gap.
Michelle?
Uh, Mr. Ken Hughes, I think, says he has his hand up.
I don't see a hand on my screen.
I don't either.
Parks and Rec has their hand raised.
I don't seem to have the whole.
Parks and Rec?
Yeah, it's on the attendees. So there's an account called Parks and Rec that has its hand up, but I'm assuming it's. He'd like to speak, there we go.
Good evening. Thank, this is Ken Hughes from Parks and Rec, thank you, everyone. Um, I just wanted a quick clarification, I know there's talk about implementing the fees starting July one. But I just want you guys to be aware that there are some fees in there, uh, regarding like parking at calf pasture. Uh, vet boats at Marina, so I just want you guys to be aware that if, if it's going to start July one. Does that include all the fees, or is that just the sports fees?
But I thought all fees were starting July first, and then youth fees were starting January first. But I think Ken, I think Mr. Hughes is raising a question about a July first start for some of the fees, so.
Correct, correct, for example, parking, uh, one of the fees on there, we're raising beach parking for non-residents. So typically that would be something we start at the beginning of the beach season on May fifteenth.
Mr. Sowers, when will we start with the fees?
Um, these are, these are, um. A- as I said before, um. We, when we had the public hearing, we, we expected people to come out and, and talk at that time, and Ken is right, with our beach. Our beach, uh, fees will, will, will start in May, because, um. Because that's when we start our beach season, so they will start in May. We did not raise, um, our, one of our fees, we didn't raise, um, uh, the major fee, um. The daily fee in, in the, the beach season, because it was going to cost too much, um. Um, so it was going to cost too much parking in the neighborhoods to raise the fee, we would have more. Um, probably more parking in the neighborhoods and.
Any further comments or discussion, Mr. Goldstein?
I, I think as a matter of trying to alleviate as much or remove as much confusion as possible. Councilmember Eric is right, because the way that the, the item is written. Does give discretion as to the implementation dates of certain fees. I agree with the suggestion that's made here tonight, and I hope my colleagues agree with that suggestion as well. That we do a, basically an exception for youth sports, and that those fees would be effective Jan one, twenty twenty-six. However, the other fees, for example, like the ones brought up, beach fees, that. That those be, you know, implemented in a, you know, at, at, at a, an inappropriate time, so if you, if, if. You know, commensurate with the fee schedule. Um, I, I don't see any language here that limits that unless we put in limiting language, which we seem to only. Have an intent to do for youth sports.
I'd like to just make the suggestion, I think it's a great point, um. We have professionals here, we also have a Parks and Rec Committee, I would like to suggest maybe we leave it. To Mr. Sowers, when he, which each event and each scheduled thing takes place, um. I personally trust him, and if there's an issue, we could probably discuss it in the Parks and Rec Committee. Um, and I, I don't know that we need to discuss which date things start. That's just my feeling about it.
Michelle.
I, I, I agree with some of that, but I think we should put some language in here, even if we say timing of implementation of fees. Um, leave it to the discretion of, of, of restoration in parks or timing with season.
We should put a date specific, we should put a date specific, so there's absolutely no question. And this way, uh, Mr. Sowers can't be, uh, you know, he'll say maybe, uh. It's July, whatever, this way, it's going to be date specific, so that there's no question.
So based on what you just said, May will be other fees that will be.
May fifteenth would be our beach, our parking fees.
So the implementation of fees seem to have started in January or February for baseball, like for this season?
This would be January.
January.
Twenty twenty-six, and then our, our, our season fees for.
No, I'm sorry, their season starts already, you are, somebody said you already started signing stuff, right?
Right.
Had twenty-five season is already started, so it'd be difficult, as you said, Mr. Fairbairn, to then go back and try to reassess some of the folks and say.
Which is why.
Which is why, I'm going to, which is why we're talking about putting in a specific date, but. They're different just implementation time, so what's that date that's going to cover everybody? What's that language?
Fees for the youth sports will commence on January first, two thousand twenty-six. You don't need to mention any other.
Don't mention any.
Yeah.
So that's what we have here.
So are there any other comments or questions or discussion?
Repeat that last.
Uh, it's just, she's going to make a motion that the fees for the youth sports. Will commence on July, uh, January first, two thousand twenty-six, leave everything else silent as it is, this way. Okay, so why don't you, you want to make that motion?
Okay. Um, so making a motion for item C one, approve the fee adjustments for the following fee based on. A fees and charges study completed by MGT consultants, where they measure the market demand. And cost factors in conducting recreation park programs, activities and use of the recreation and parks. Facilities. Field, let's see. Field use, with the exception of youth field use fees to be implemented January first, twenty twenty-six. That's, I make that amendment? Yep, I'm sorry.
Any comments on the event, sorry. Mr. Sead.
I just want to just, um, thank Mrs. Stowers for really suggesting this from the beginning, and also all the work you're doing in parks. I mean, as the mayor mentioned earlier, for winning awards, you're doing a really great job, um. In the community, um, and talking to the, the members of the community, so I just, I'm a lot of time I'm a critic, but I just really want to say. Thank you for everything you're doing and thank you for suggesting this amendment.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I just, um, so the things that we just voted on, because. No, no, no. Like try to put some new center for trying to park, that's all the old fees, everything, the event space use. Is not until July first, or is it take place when we vote on it right now?
July first, except for administratively, we're going to implement the, the, uh, beach fees, because that's part of.
So if I want to hold an event at the end of June, it's still the old fees.
That's two different, that's two different things.
Well, it's all on the same.
Number, what she's speaking about, number five, calendar. Those are events that they go through the application process through Parks and Rec. So that is separate than what we are talking about for item one, it's two separate.
So park usage fees, I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff on here, so park usage fees is tonight or?
Our uses fees are.
Or July first.
Part of the July first, yes.
All right.
Yeah, we've already, the events that, the events that have, we already approved. They, they've already. They, they've already, they've already been giving what they, what they have to pay.
Don't want anybody to.
So. The, the motion on the floor is that it passed the ordinance of the, the policy. And the delay the implementation of youth sports fields. Until January twenty, January first of twenty twenty six. Everything else will be implemented. As mentioned. So have any other comments or discussions on the amendment?
I, I kinda like what you just said. What did you just say?
Other fees will be as implemented as in the policy. The youth sports will be implemented January first of two thousand twenty six.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Abstentions? All in favor of the motion as amended? Opposed? Abstentions, motion carry. Thank you.
Two, two. Seven C two. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to sign an agreement with the Fields Friends. Of Norwalk Dogs, whose mission is to represent Norwalk residents with dogs. And to collaborate with the city's Recreation and Parks Department to preserve and improve current off. Off-leash dog parks and working with Recreation Parks Department and finding ways to develop more leashed. And off-leashed space in Norwalk for dogs. Establish communication between Norwalk residents with dogs in the city. And fundraise to provide needed amenities in dog parks named where it can.
Uh, you're making that, okay, would you like to talk about the motion?
You know, the more that we're building, the more that we are a dog-friendly community. And so we, you know. For some residents, it's, it's, it seems a little overwhelming. Uh, but the reality is more of the partners that are going out for dog friendly and we need to be able to at least accommodate those things. And I just have to say, um, Recreation and Parks through you, Robert and Ken Hughes have been very aware and responsive to the needs of. Residents with their, you know, furry babies. And so, um, we appreciate um, that and. There's a lot more that we can do. And I think with Recreation and Parks, we really need to be seeking out other folks who are willing to partner with us. To help offset some of those costs and just the work.
Just a point of clarification. The Friends of the Norwalk Dogs are gonna do the fundraising, not me.
We're not doing that. But I, but I think this is in the right direction. And so if there's anything you'd like to add to.
Well.
Yeah, I just, I just um, wanted to thank you for your vision and your, your willingness to, to work with dogs. Maybe because I have dogs and people know I have dogs, I hear from the dog people. And and you know, they really, really have been asking for this. So I, I really appreciate it for all the dogs in the city. Um, I have a question. So you know, in the, in the language here, it's, you know, loo- looking for. You know, off-leash and unleashed spaces in Norwalk, but in the backup, it seems specific to Taylor Farm and.
Oyster Shell.
Park. So I just would like a little more clarification.
Yeah, yeah. I thi- I think we started out with or with uh, Taylor Farms and then um, there was a lot of advocacy behind Oyster Shell. And it's been um. Uh, it's, it's been a, a, a growing uh, interest with Cranberry folks as well. So in fact, uh, one of their uh, board members have gotten on the um. Ha- has become a member of, of the Friends of Norwalk. So what, what we were trying to build really is a, an organization um, that would take on. Uh, kind of in a voluntary aspect, uh, the advocacy of dogs in um, in Norwalk. And um. We're gonna need that because we're gonna uh, in, in, in any city where you have a growing. A growing population of dogs. And I'm from a city, Seattle, who has more dogs than, than children. And so, uh, and so um, I seen the need right away because. You know. People have, have called me and talked to me about, you know, there's no place to walk their dogs. They, they can't walk them in the parks because we don't have a leash law. But we do have now three dog parks where they can uh, bring their dogs. And I think in the future, we'll look for more space um, for them to, for. Dog lovers to, or dog owners and lovers to have their dogs. I've never really been a dog owner or been around dogs. You know, I grew up in a family with thirteen kids, so we didn't have any food for any dogs. So um, um, but I recently got married and my wife has uh, French Bulldogs, two of them. And I'm telling you, those, they're, they're delightful and lovey, but they are something else. So, so I'm, I'm getting the, I'm getting the two uh.
Discussion, uh, Miss Doug.
Um, few things as we move forward with this and I just wanna shout out to Price for being the cool dog about this. Um, I'm very thankful that, thank you, Price, for really looking towards the, getting the poop bags. At all these locations because that's one thing that was lacking, especially in Cranberry Park. And the other thing that she and I argue about all the time is I'm hoping it doesn't mean there's more asphalting for more parking at the dog parks. You know, I'm hoping with more locations that there's not a push to take more green space or trees away.
Yeah, we do have a, a project to, to uh, increase the parking at Taylor Farms. That's been in the capital. Yeah, yeah, we're working on that now.
Any further questions or comments or discussion?
I'm gonna make this question. So I just wanna thank you, Robert, um, for all the work that you've done. And if you haven't heard what he said. There's been a lot of things that over the years that Recreation and Parks. Could have been doing. And I think when you came in, you addressed all those things. And we're at a point right now with this department that we're actually making revenue. We're bringing in money. And, and that's what we need if we're gonna upkeep our fields and we make this a place. I say this all the time, recreational spaces is what draws people into a city. And how clean it is and how open it is. And so those are one of the things that I think you, you, you made a priority. And, and it costs. And so we have to be mindful of that. And I think this is a very uh, delicate place to be right now, given where we are. Funding and just what's going on, how, how long we can maintain these things. But I, I just wanna thank you publicly for the work that you've done. Been able to do. And that foundation question is something that we've been talking about and trying to get off the ground. I think this really just says that we really do need that. Not just for sports, but just for everything. If people wanna participate. When we open up the new community um, center, there's gonna have to be those types of resources to ensure that everybody has a chance to participate. And all that the city has to offer. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, we talked to, to a few civic leaders that are interested in the foundation. Uh, and I just have to do my part to bring the mayor on board and maybe get other people involved. But you've all been a team. You've all been part of the team, uh, my, the, the, the parks team. And all of you and particularly the mayor who has helped uh, fund these uh, improvements. And uh, and of course, our legislative people.
Any further comments or discussion? I just have one thing, um, as we're going through this process, I would encourage to keep in your mind. Scholarships for young people who cannot afford to play some, pay some of these fees. And we need to work on that because we have a lot of young people in the city of Norwalk that probably would struggle, the families would struggle. So we have to, we have to make sure we, we take care of them. So all in favor of the item? As amended. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to adjourn?
Alright.
Okay, so this is item uh, Josh.
Yeah. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents to amend the plan of conservation and development to implement the recommendations. Of the Affordable Housing Action Plan, like. This process has been the culmination of around at least eight years' work. Um, starting with um, meetings, I think as far, as far back as August. Um, as well as several meetings, including a joint meeting between this council and a planning and zoning commission to go over. How we can address what is frankly, one of the biggest challenges facing Norwalkers, which is affordability, the cost of living and housing being the number one. Uh, culprit when it comes to um, the most substantial costs in our city. This is something I know, if you haven't read the housing needs assessment that came out last June. Um, I think it is absolutely required meeting if you are interested in anything having to do with cost of living and housing. Um, and policy in the city. Um, but just a couple of quick stats. That the median sale price has gone up from four hundred thirteen thousand dollars in twenty fifteen to seven hundred thousand dollars. In twenty twenty three, thirty eight percent of our renters and fifty percent of our homeowners earn less than fifty thousand dollars a year. Seventy five percent of our public sector workers, teachers, firefighters, police don't live in Norwalk. Um, and nearly forty percent of Norwalk's households pay over thirty percent of their household income towards housing costs. It really underscores that we need to do something about this. And while we're. I think we can go out on a limb and say we're probably not going to get help from the Trump administration on this particular item. We, that doesn't mean we should stop trying. Um, at all. And so I wanna introduce um, two people I think have been really crucial to this effort. Um, Michelle Andrewsky and Steve Kleppen from Planning and Zoning who have been. Um, and I know Michelle's here and has really taken the lead with this and did an excellent presentation at the Economic Community Development uh, meeting the other night. And I also wanna recognize my colleague Nora and Jelsoft Eichner, who leads our Ad Hoc Affordable Housing Committee and has really taken. Um, the reins and done, has been doing an excellent job. And there's a lot of work to come. If you haven't seen um. The meeting that she chaired last week, it was really um, helpful and informative. Um, and it is on YouTube and I encourage anyone uh, to uh, watch it because I thought it was really good. Um, so uh, I wanna introduce Michelle Andrewsky. She's gonna do a brief presentation um, about the Affordable Housing Action Plan. And I see Michelle's hair. Michelle, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. I have a short presentation, um, and I will pull it up. Can you all see it?
No, okay. You might wanna take the sidebar.
Is that better?
Yep, much better. Thank you.
Alrighty. So as Josh, um, Mr. Goldstein said, um, we completed the needs assessment last August. Um, and presented to the Economic Community Development. Um, and then. Um, more recently, we had the joint uh, planning and zoning in common council meeting at the end of January. Um, and then just last week, we had another meeting with um. That uh, Economic Community Development meeting uh, for this plan. So. I'm sure everyone's well aware, we've been working on this um, for quite a bit of time. And I'll get into why we put this plan together. Although this plan is a requirement of the state that every town and city have to put a citywide plan for affordable housing. Um, and this was something that Norwalk needed to help organize and guide our thoughts and visions to address housing issues and the demand. The statute requires that we do this plan um, every five years, that we state how, how we intend to increase. Um, affordable housing within the municipality. Uh, hold informational meetings um, and activities for residents about the development of the plan, which we had done. Um, requirement of notice when the public hearing will occur, uh, which will follow um, with the hopeful adoption. Um, and then going to planning and zoning for public hearing. And then that we um, regularly review and maintain this plan um, into the future. So a little bit about the outreach, um, the initial outreach was a large portion and an important portion of the planning process. Um, the project started over a year ago and it started with identifying the needs to help drive the policies and implementation of the plan. This required a broad range of community engagement opportunities in order to hear from folks about what they need and want. Um, the consultant also interviewed professionals like realtors, brokers and developers. We sat down with community service folks and housing stakeholders, made opportunities to speak with residents. At forums, pop up at various city events. Um, we also did a survey in conjunction with the redevelopment agency. After we completed the needs assessment, um, this is where really the recommendations um. Were boiled down into four categories. So some of the actions you'll see either in a zoning land use category, and this encompasses uh. Changes in the zoning regulations and workforce housing, um, public-private partnerships. An example of this is construction of new affordable housing units through underutilized city land. Um, incorporating different partnerships to be able to fund opportunities like that. Um, tax and financing innovations. This could be a local tax incentive to facilitate affordable housing. Um, and really target what kind of affordable housing you would like to see. Um, and then the next grouping was the federal and state advocacy. So lobbying. Um, changes to barriers to types of units for affordable housing, um, like condominiums and things like that of homeownership. In the action items, um, there were five priority action items that were in the matrix that we highlighted. This included expansion of inclusionary zoning provisions, so where we can expand um. The workforce housing program, construction of affordable units on city-owned land, like I just stated. Update natural affordable units, um, funding those units and then having them be deed restricted in perpetuity. To create more options for folks, um, a tax incentive policy for affordable units. And then advocate for more governmental funding for public and affordable housing. Here I listed a slew of um, the latest changes made to the plan. And this are, these are changes that resulted from that January joint meeting. Um, nothing was too substantial. It was a lot of clarity. Um, I won't go through them all, um, but. Adding definitions, kind of just refining some points that people pointed out. Um, so we just addressed them and laid them out here, just so people are aware. And I'm happy to share these slides um. For people that were interested in the edits made. And this is just my last slide. So what's next? We really um, already started tackling some of the action items um. Across the board in different categories for planning and zoning, we are looking at possibly three changes. Uh, incentivizing the two-bedroom units was a high demand and need um, from the needs assessment. So we are making those count as one point five workforce housing units if they do do a two-bedroom unit. Um, and then we saw that there was a need of an income uh, bracket for affordable units. Um, from eighty to ninety percent. So we're coming up some language um, that the Planning and Zoning Commission can look at. To uh, create more units there. Some legislative proposals we've been working on. Um, there's a food desert topic. This wasn't an action item that was brought out within the plan, but we're gonna tie it into because it, it really does overlap with a lot of our. Missions within the plan. So food deserts, specifically in South Norwalk, we wanna support um, grocery stores and access the healthy food. So. New York City has adopted some similar language uh, that really promotes um, through zoning and taxes. Of how you can promote um, grocery stores and transit-oriented in high-density areas. Um, and then there's a homeowner, own, ownership for condominiums. Um, we've seen a lack of creation of condominiums. Um, so we're gonna dig into pulling back all like. The statute limitations and where we can propose to revise them to make uh. Condominiums more ideal to uh, build. And then the tax sale to home ownership, uh, we see this in um, Massachusetts where they uh. Have delinquent houses in the tax sales, have a housing agency like the Norwalk Housing Authority. To be the first right of refusal to make purchase that home and then uh. Make it so that home would be sold to somebody um, needing affordable hu- housing and get their foot in the door of home. Own, ownership. And, and then some of the last points here, we started uh. And, and then some of the last points here, we started uh, having talks about community land trust. This was a couple of months ago at the Ad Hoc Affordable Housing Committee. Um, we had somebody that was an expert in that field make a presentation. We're gonna have a speaker come in April um, for tax incentives. There's a newish legislation. Um, that enables some abilities in the, in taxes and targeting specific housing that Norwalk might want to see. Um, and then the Affordable Housing Account that was adopted um, by the Ad Hoc Affordable Housing Committee and Council. Um, and so pushing that forward, coming up with that committee and what those applications will look like is coming, upcoming. Um, we created a housing, uh, affordable housing tracker. So taking that action items list and putting it in an Excel. And being able to have it more interactive so we could put notes in there. Um, who came to speak and just really track where these action items are falling, um, issues that are coming up. Um, so we could see our progress. And then lastly, um, we're looking forward to putting a housing forum together. Um, this year to, for the residents looking for affordable housing, gathering all the resources that we have in Norwalk. And making it public and people can come and ask questions and we can have um. Conversations there. So. Um, all good things. Um, excited to get this adopted um, and happy to answer any other questions.
I don't know. Um, I actually want to turn over to Councilmember Njelzke actor.
Any questions regarding the Affordable Housing Plan? Um, Mr. Jelski actor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So uh, I will just piggyback on um. Ms. Andrewsky's comments to say that I do hope that anyone who's interested in this um, comes out to our Affordable Housing Ad Hoc Committee meetings where we will be diving. Into this plan. Um, we've already started that work. I've been very grateful for um, the work that's already been done. Um, we will be looking at tax incentives. Um, as folks uh, you know, may know. We have an opportunity under a newish, uh, I think as Michelle said, state statute to do more targeted. Um, incentives and we really need to figure out what that would look like, how that would work, what do we need? How can we, you know, sort of um, support the uh, needs identified in the study in a way that's going to actually be effective? So that's going to be, I think, a complex process. But we're going to kick that off and really get those conversations started. Um, and I'm really looking forward to working through um, another item that um. Will be coming out for discussion is a um, comprehensive look at what. Funding, federal, state and local, we currently have for affordable housing. I think it will be very eye-opening. Um, I think that, oh, I've already learned a number of things, including. The fact that most of the available funding actually comes through federal tax credits. Which obviously creates long-term concerns for us. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to really delve in here and I'm excited to do that work. Um, I think the final thing I'll note is, I think as uh, Mr. Goldstein pointed out, the data that was collected was really um, helpful. It provided a lot of very specific and detailed information about where we have gaps in our current housing stock, both rental and homeownership. Um, where we are currently unable to provide affordable living situations for the people who work in our city. Which is, I think, feeding into a lot of the traffic problems that we hear about from our constituents. Um, so you know, these problems are all interconnected. Um, if we don't have enough housing, and to be clear, no one has enough housing. This nation as a whole is down around, I think at this point, the estimate's over four million units. So this is a nationwide problem, but it is a particular problem in the Northeast. We have not built enough, period, full stop. We don't have enough units. And that creates enormous problems because when you don't have enough supply, the price goes up. Um, and so we is certainly, these are not Norwalk-specific problems, but they're problems that we have to deal with locally. And so we need to figure out how to grapple with the national trends and the impact that they're having in our very specific community. And I'm really excited to do that work. Um, I think it should be um, a, a real chance for people to engage. Um, and so again, there's always public comments at the Ad Hoc Affordable Housing. I think we recommend, we really love what people's suggestions and ideas, and the airs pointed me to a new organization that I'm excited to learn more about. So we have a real opportunity to really draw on our own resources and figure out what we can do with um, both existing and potentially new. Options uh, going forward.
For the discussion.
You know, um, I, I actually, as you may have voted against this in committee because I don't think that the plan is. Well-thought-out enough. I know it's taken, sorry. I, I know that there's been a lot of work that's gone into it and thank you. And I, I think there's a lot of great ideas there. But there's absolutely zero metrics in there. Um. One of the things I know is that we, the state requires that we create this plan. Um, and there's some great information in there, so it's a great plan, but. We already have fourteen percent affordable housing in the city, which is great. Um, and I'm not saying that we don't need more, but I'd like to know exactly how much more we intend. If, if we increase from fourteen to twenty-four, twenty-five percent of. You know, if we get to a quarter of the city being affordable housing. Um, what are the unintended effects? Because one of the statistics I thought was really interesting was that one-fifth of our residents in Norwalk are seniors. So I would like to see more targeted in that plan, more senior affordable housing. But there, it really was open-ended, kind of loosey-goosey, uh, to the point where I was uncomfortable with that. Um, so there are unintended outcomes. So if we get to, say, twenty-five percent or a quarter of the city becoming affordable housing. Um, what does that mean? When we shift the tax burden, if we give tax abatements, the tax burden has to shift. We have a budget now where everybody's taxes are going up that are, you know, homeowners. You know, if people are on a fixed income, seniors, and they have to pay another thousand dollars, or they choosing between medication and food versus taxes. There is nothing in the plan that talks about potential unintended outcomes, which are very concerning to me, given that. Our budget is going, you know, in, in a direction that's very difficult for a lot of families. And I'm very concerned about my constituents. I'm very concerned about the residents of Norwalk. I'm. I, I do like that we're focusing on food deserts and um, I just don't like this becoming part of the P O C D as a plan. I do like us talking about it more because it is an important topic. But I think we really need to talk about what we want for the city, what percentage of affordable housing. Um, what are the other statistics? You know, yes, seventy-five percent of the people that work in Norwalk. Um, don't live here, but not a lot of Norwalk residents actually commute out of the city. That was one of the statistics that I thought was really interesting. I think only twenty-two percent commute to New York City. So if we're. Focusing on transit or development and really, we really want people to commute by train and things like that. Um, we really need to focus on how to get them commuting in and out more effectively and working on transportation issues. We also are young people, not to take a lot of time, um, really need to have access to homes too. So creating more senior housing, I think, targeted. May get some of the seniors out of their homes if, and a lot of seniors don't want to be in apartments. Maybe we need more um. Townhouses or things that they're comfortable and moving into so that our young people can move into homes where they can grow their families. I also think we should focus on financially supporting them, you know, maybe they can't come up with a down payment and there's ways that we could help them. With those down payments. But that, that being said, I think we really need to focus on those opportunities for people to grow. Um, wealth and freedom, not create more situations where they're paying rents that they can barely afford for a long time. So I, I really don't like this plan. I'm sorry. So I'm going to vote no for it.
Mr. Seed.
Yeah, um, I, I appreciate everything um. It's done, you say, but I think this plan talks about a lot of different plans that's not just apartments. Um, and I think that that's important because affordable housing isn't, there isn't just one solution. Um, affordable housing, like um, Ms. Margaret Sue, who recently retired as a fair housing officer, would always say affordable housing is like a quilt. And you have all of these patches that come together where you need shelters, you need um, like apartments like the housing authority to all come together. Decide the solution of affordable housing. Um, and I think that we talked about it, and we've been talking about it in the ad hoc, um, the ground review commission, and thank you, um. Councilwoman, um, Jelski, I think for really bringing these conversations ahead. But I think that. We, we, we talked about all of these things and I think that if we're looking for a solution, um. One single solution to affordable housing, we're just not going to find it. Because affordable housing means a lot of different things, depending on their incomes. And I think that um, this plan is not perfect, it's not going to solve the issue right away, but I think it is a start. Um, and it's a start for us to, to keep talking about it and keep working on it so that it can improve, so that we can tackle this issue that's not just a Norwalk issue. Um, as we always say, but it's an issue that we want to work towards. Um, for the people in Norwalk to try to solve it. So I really think this plan, like I said, it's not perfect. Um, and doesn't have one aha moment where it's like, that's going to solve the problem. But it's a start for us to find a solution that's going to be the quilt um, for Norwalk and um, hopefully a model for this surrounding city.
Mm-hmm.
This is Lo, your, Mr. Lopez.
Yeah, to Heather's point, I know you mentioned a couple of things that I'd like to unpack. You mentioned seniors, for instance, so. You know, I don't think it's strictly necessary to capture seniors independent of other lower-income groups. Um, only because they are part of that group. So they share some of the same challenges, they share some of the same commonalities. So for instance, uh, the segment of the population that are renters or owners make thirty, thirty-nine percent or less of state S M I. Second, they also need access to rental units or to bedroom apartments because they might have a caretaker or a family member that's actually taking care of them. And third, most units in the city are, are not affordable for those making less than, I think it's eighty. Eighty percent or eighty percent of the estate S M I. Now, the second thing with the, with the metrics, so I think it's premature to predefine. Absolute rigid numerical targets, only because it does, it takes away from the city's ability to adapt to changing economic circumstances. Uh, adjusting to changing in construction costs or adjustments to state investment funding. I mean, that's something that can be done at the appraisal level of a project. And so same thing with revenue impact assessments, that I think it's something you were getting at. So I think after reading the report, I think that's beyond the scope of this uh, of this plan. The focus of this plan was to do and conduct an assessment of what the current inventory is. Provide some policy suggestions on how to move forward, but without adding that rigidity. That can constrain the city in order to adapt to changing economic variables in the future. So I just wanted to, just, just want to unpack some of that.
In the P O C D. That's, that's my issue is in the P O C D. I think it's a great plan, a great. Direction to go in.
Jelski actor has it.
Sorry.
Uh, well, and I, I think maybe I'll start from that point, which is to say that the P O C D, if folks have read the three hundred and some odd pages of it. Is very broad and very general, right? It is not um. It is not intended to be a rigid plan. And often what it is really is a vision, is a setting forth of data of our current state and our sort of where we're hoping to head. Um, and I think that the, this plan um. Is the starting place that we need because what it really identifies is truthfully how much we don't yet. Know in terms of how we're going to achieve these objectives. So it identifies that we are eight thousand units, not apartments. Be clear, units, which is just the metric for, we need places for people to live. We are short eight thousand people for places for people to live. To create a um, economy that would allow for the enough housing that people who. Have the incomes that they have living in Norwalk would find a place to live that was in their bracket, right? So that's a metric that includes the fact, not just that we need exactly eight thousand units, but that. When you have a market that would have that much flexibility and fluidity in it, people, the prices would drop such that people could find places to live, right? So we're not going to get there, as Mr. Seed, I think, said, with anything other than a very patchwork approach. And it is going to take a lot of different options and we're going to have to make some very hard choices. We're going to have to have some really complex conversations, right? There is not that much city-owned land, to be clear. Norwalk is a small space that is pretty fully occupied, right? So I think this plan probably went about as far as it could go without more public conversation about what trade-offs we are comfortable with. Right? We cannot, I think, in the abstract, expect staff and consultants to say, yes. It is time for you to, you know, use the remaining six pieces of decent-sized city land you have and build on each of those. You know, five hundred units, right? That was not appropriate for this plan. So I think what the plan actually does a really good job of is laying out some of the hard choices coming at us. And really helping us have an inventory of what the resources we have available are. Where we have potentially leverage, where we have things we need to explore more. Um, and what, again, what the needs are that are driving this. Um, and I think that the next step really is on all of us. It's not just to be ad hoc housing, but also through Economic Community Development. Through, um, quite frankly, I think pretty much all of our committees to really grapple with these questions. Where do we have opportunities? Where can we collaborate? What space are we willing to give up? You know, I, there are, I think, really interesting, creative conversations to be had. Can we use edges of things? Can we dual-purpose things? Can we build on top of things? Um, that need to become a part of every conversation we have going forward. And that's actually exactly why I think this is appropriate for the P O C D. Because in many senses, what it's saying is, every decision the city makes going forward, we need to think about its impact on housing and housing availability. And unless we do that, unless we consider all of our city planning, and I gotta be real honest, the capital budget. We're gonna have some really hard choices to ca- to grapple with. Right now, the capital budget does not fund affordable housing basically in this city. We mostly rely on federal tax credits to do it. If we want to do more, we're gonna have to spend more and it's going to be in capital budget. So we need time to incorporate that thought process into all of these decisions. We need to planning, you know, when the city departments are looking for proposals to bring up for next year's capital budget. They need this whole year to start thinking about those. So now is the time to put it in the P O C D, to get these processes going, to get this hard conversation started, to get creativity started. Um, and then I do hope that our, that our housing plan five years from now is going to look very different and will have more targeted suggestions. We'll have plant, you know, items that are in progress, goals for the future, but right now, we're just not there yet. And I think that's actually a really okay and good thing for us to admit. Because part of what we need is to be humble about what we do and don't know and what we do and don't have. And then we can really begin the process of trying to figure out how we do this better.
This air has been just.
Um, I, I think I was um, from the beginning, not very happy with this plan. And I wasn't not happy with the plan because of the sake of the plan. I was unhappy with the plan. Because I thought the scope of the plan was too nar- narrow. We tend to use vocabulary words blanketly, and y'all know that's one of our pet peeves. We say affordable housing, but what do we mean? Because what I say is affordable may not be what is affordable for my colleagues. And so what I was happy with the progression of the plan, to see some of that language get cleaned up. To see some of us use normal term, I mean, on the same terminology and mean the same thing. And I think this plan helps us do that so that we have vocabulary, so that when we're speaking, we're all saying the same thing. We're still, even in this conversation, gotta clean up some things because some people are saying affordable units, some people are saying housing, some people are saying this. But we are much farther down the road than we were three years ago when this started. And it started probably four years ago when I first came on the council and we said we were going to do an ad hoc affordability. Saying all that to say. It is time for this body, the people who sit at this table, to understand. If you want to get something, you're gonna have to give something. We like titles in the city of Norwalk. We like to be known as the greenest and the prettiest and the best. Well, we're gonna have to decide what we're gonna give up to allow people to stay here. So that they can participate in being the cleanest and the best. We keep hearing constituents saying, no more apartments. Well, then we need constituents to come to these public participation uh, opportunities and tell us, other than apartments, what would you like to see? Because we don't know it all. We're doing the best we can with the information that honestly, we're going to get ourselves. There's no book. We're going and, and seeking out different entities and things to try to solve. So this is to the community who may listen to us at some point. If there is, there is nothing that we can't do. I see, I see this plan as nothing that we can't do. Every idea, no matter how big, small and in-between it is, it needs to come to the table. So at least we can have a conversation about it. Um, a couple of years ago, we talked about tiny homes, people were up and, but we might have to do that. If that's going to allow us to start to address the need of affordable housing. There can be nothing that is not on the table because the crisis is today. It's not down the road, it is literally today. Lastly, I have to say, when we think of affordable, can we stop making the coalition with low income and affordable? One don't got nothing to do with the other.
Yes.
I can make six figures and still it might not be affordable. I can make six figures and still it might not be affordable, depending on my household size. And we tend to say affordable and low income in this, we need to stop, we need to clean that language of people, we need to stop. Affordable means no matter what I make, I am able to thrive and live here. And a lot of our residents, we say affordable housing, they think public housing, public housing is different than affordable housing. Our fire, our teachers, our police, our D P W, they deserve affordable housing. They deserve workforce housing, we like that terminology too, we've got in there every now and then, workforce housing. The, the people at the bakery, they deserve workforce housing, the people at Stop &amp; Shop, they deserve workforce housing or affordable housing, whatever we call it this week, the vocabulary word of the day. What we essentially are saying, and we need everybody's help, is we want to build a community that is able to grow, because we are a growing community, but it doesn't stifle the community. We want people to be able to live here and grow so that their children's children's children can live here. And we want homeownership. I keep saying that, it's not about units and apartments, it's about homes and houses. Not units and apartments, it's about homes and houses, we want house, we want homes. We want people to buy homes here and invest in our community, because we believe at this table, it's worth the investment.
It's okay, I'll pass.
Any further comments?
Yes, you said it all.
All I was gonna say was just how proud I am of this entire council, and, and I say that, and I, and I really mean it when I say the entire council, because this was an incredibly thoughtful discussion that has been one of many and many to come, and it will be and will continue to be, I think, a focus of this council and certainly a focus of the city to attack this problem with the vigor and effort it deserves. It is the single biggest challenge facing Norwalk today when it comes to affordability, cost of living, it's not just Norwalk, obviously, it is a statewide problem. A number of us, myself included, have lobbied at the state level for more permissive housing structures and to be able to get additional funds to do things like transit-oriented development and, and get responsible development so that we can create more opportunities for people at all levels of the economic spectrum to live here. So I, I just, I, I think this is something that everyone can get behind, I don't actually think this is a partisan issue at all. Because it is such a blanket universal challenge that faces every single person in this city. So I, I am just so grateful for my colleagues and for their commitment, and I also wanna thank Michelle Andruski, who gave an excellent presentation tonight, and, and I wanna thank the P and Z Department who are working to not only help us do our work at the council legislative level, but also to help improve, refine our zoning code, which is a crucial tool when it comes to creating additional opportunities. And I know that Michelle highlighted a few tonight, but there's gonna be a lot more to come. And, and obviously, I'm excited with the addition of Jay Hibansky, and in the next week or two, will be another voice to help further our planning and zoning policies, so. With that, I think I gotta do a little vote.
Any further comment? Before we move to the vote, I just want to say one thing. We obviously know that Norwalk is land-strapped. As we look at the zoning, let's make sure that we don't go eighteen stories, because the only way is up. The only way is up in many of the areas, so. And while we might go up a few stories, but we, if we go eighteen, twenty stories, we're gonna become that town we all talk about.
That's like a new fire truck, there are unintended consequences from everything, yes.
All in favor of the item? Pos. Abstentions. When opposition. No.
Motion to adjourn, forgive me.
Motion to adjourn by Michelle, all in favor? Pos, abstentions, it is nine forty-five, we are adjourned, thank you.